Welcome to the 2022 Maui County Interviews. Today, we have Shane Senancy, who is running for the county council seat for East Maui. Shane, welcome. Nice to have you with us. Shane, as a start, just so that our viewers can get to know you a little bit better, could you give us an overview of your civic engagement before you became a county council member? And then while being a county council member, what are some of the things you're most proud of in terms of your accomplishments?
Aloha, Paul, and mahalo for having me tonight, and aloha to the Maui Pono Network. Yep, as Paul had mentioned, aloha, I'm Shane Senancy, and I'm currently the East Maui Council Member, and I'm currently the Chair of the Agriculture and Public Trust Committee. This is my second term on the county council, and I'm applying for a third term with your support. I was born and raised in Hana, and I've been a special needs teacher here in Hana for 20 years. I received my Bachelor of Architecture at the University of Oregon, and I've been involved in my East Maui community, one as part of the Ahamoku representative. My experience on the council has been positive thus far. We've been working hard the last three and a half years, and we've been passing many policies and legislation to better our county government. However, this work has not been possible without the assistance from our local residents and from community associations like yourselves. I think community input has been a major part of us council members being able to pass historic legislation and making important changes. And especially with the virtual participation during these past couple of years, the council has been even more accessible to our local constituents.
Shane, you mentioned historical legislation. Could you give me an overview of what you mean by that by at least one example?
Oh, great. Thank you for that. Yes, we've been working on, let's see, I have some lists. Some of my notable legislation that we've been working on first is the Plastics Bill. And I introduced a bill prohibiting the use of single-use plastic utensils. And we had huge opposition from both the plastic industry, who said that there was no affordable alternatives out there. However, this ban has since gone into effect with little hiccups, and it just showed that we can adapt, we can better protect the environment, the animals, humans, from microplastics and from plastic trash, from littering our beaches and harming our marine and sea life. So that was one of them. Another notable one is the pesticide bill. I also introduced one of the strongest public lands organic policies in the nation. Starting next year, the chemical pesticides and fertilizers will no longer be allowed in county parks where our keiki play, on our golf courses used by residents and visitors, and along county road sides where we walk and we drive. Again, there was massive opposition and even threats from not only the chemical industry, but from our state public officials who stated that they, the state had purview over pesticide use. However, as county property owners, we were able to establish this law on all county-owned properties.
Thank you for that. Lucien, Danae will be next. Lucien?
Yes, good to see you, Shane. It's been a long time. I'm going to ask two quick questions. One, I know you're working on some equally historic water policy right now, and that you're working on a charter amendment to establish something that Maui County has never done, which is to have an agency with the expertise to manage our kind of historic plantation water systems that are now fallen into a lot of disrepair. And the legislation is aimed at East Maui to start this charter amendments. My question to you is, it was brought up at your recent meeting by a representative from the administration, that maybe the charter amendment should actually cover more than East Maui, because there are systems all over the island that the county needs some expertise if they're going to have a longer range management role as these plantation entities sort of fall by the wayside in their repairs. Can you let us know what your strategy is on this new water authority, what you see its ideal role being, and if it could serve East Maui and eventually other areas?
Thank you, Lucien, for that question. And again, of anybody out there, you have been the authority on water issues all these past years, so I appreciate all of your expertise on this matter as well. And yes, we are working, currently working on a charter amendment for this fall's ballot to create a community water authority to obtain the lease areas for East Maui. The authority would have a community advisory board responsible for watershed management and community engagement, as well as the review of federal grant fund processes, capital improvement and maintenance plans. There is substantial funding available to government agencies for these types of projects, so this authority would also help to secure water sovereignty for our community and to meet future ecosystem, residential and agriculture, mainly agriculture needs as well. And so, as you know, this has been an ongoing process. Currently, the EMI and Mahi Pono are requesting a 30-year lease to those four areas in East Maui. And so, at a recent APT meeting, Ian Hirakawa from the state land management division came and said, offered that we could, the county could potentially, excuse me, enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the state, where the county could apply for those leases, and mainly to uphold the public trust. In it, we feel that EMI, and notably a foreign entity, would not always look after the public trusts for our future, for future use and future generations. I think it's having these leases go to Mahi Pono, they just look at the water as a commodity for their businesses and for profit. And so, we're looking at this as a way to uphold that public trust and also to secure affordable water rates, especially if we're going to continue to expand our agriculture sector.
So, as was suggested by Sandy Baz, the administration rep, he suggested the Water Authority might encompass more than East Maui. So the question was, have you given that any thought?
Yeah, that's correct. And in fact, Lucien, I think we began as that. We began as an authority to take on some of these old and ailing plantation water systems, including the Wailuku Water System. And we're not sure what's happening right now, if the administration is in continual talks with the state, but the state was willing to match its funds if the county was going to acquire the Wailuku Water System. And so, I believe that's what Managing Director Baz was referring to. If the county went for other water systems like Wailuku, then maybe a Water Authority Board would be the proper agency to manage that system. Now, we've also have heard some interest from other council members, either from West Maui or from Molokai, that may also want to consider creating their own Water Authority Board within their districts. And the Authority Board, and this would be a separate entity, albeit under county jurisdiction. And the reason why we want to keep it under county jurisdiction is so that a board like this could qualify for federal grants out there, infrastructure grants, particularly the Biden Infrastructure Bill that is out there right now, and also to utilize the county's excellent bond rating when we're considering fixing certain parts of the system.
Thank you. Well, in the interest of time, let others get to their question, I was just going to ask you a second question. I know you created a position, your committee worked very hard, and the council was very supportive for county archaeologists, and I just wondered, you know, what happens next in that field, because that is part of the Agriculture and Public Trust Committee's purview, yes?
Mahalo for that question, Lucien. And yes, currently, we are working on completing the Cultural Overlay Bill for more protections of cultural inventory and historic sites. And then we also added a Hawaiian speaker and researcher to also help with the county archaeologists with doing research. And so, we're looking at, because the county archaeologists have this huge access to state database as far as mapping, GIS mapping system, so we're hoping that we'll institute more mapping, including that those mapping database within the Cultural Overlay.
Thank you. I think you're next, Bruce.
Yeah, Bruce Douglas, next.
Aloha, Shane. So we currently have a Mahi Pono owning our prime agricultural land, not being very willing to share that land with local farmers or cooperative, and using intensive pesticide, paracot and other pesticide uses. What is your plan, particularly since you're head of the Agricultural Committee, to create truly sustainable agriculture for the people who live here in a way that's consistent with regenerative agriculture?
Thank you, Bruce, for that question. And of course, the other historic legislation that we've passed is the newly-formed County Department of Agriculture. And this was, and of course, with you all's support, over 60% of the electorate voted for more food security on the island. As you know, over 90% of our foods are being imported from Finland. And so, I think the immediate success of creating this newly-formed Department of Agriculture is that, and I've said it before, one, it keeps the majority of our agriculturally-zoned lands for food production. And we've seen how quickly those ag-zone properties can quickly turn into either gentleman's estates, right? So that's what it does. Also, the department, and as we're continuing with our Water Authority, it reserves water, our water resources for agriculture production. So those are the two immediate successes, I think. And of course, the other one was trying to address the shortfalls that the State Department of Agriculture has fallen short with, with creating more accessible ability to small farmers, and also to, and just giving more opportunities for the small farmers, which we see is who pretty much feeds a lot of our small communities. The second part of your, I want to say, your question was during our budget proceedings, and with, again, a lot of community support, we were able to add an agriculture waste, compost and ag sector resilient specialists. And this specialist would address countywide composting needs, develop agriculture waste to revenue strategies, and drought mitigation for agriculture sector through education and technical support. So waste management, including composting, is a large area of need for Maui's agriculture community, and it affects everyday residents. We've also, during the budget sessions, increased our small agriculture grants to small farmers from $1.5 million to $3 million. So hopefully, we can reach more of those struggling small farmers, so that they can still continue to farm and somehow make a profit, make a living, really.
Thank you for that, and thank you for all your good work supporting agriculture on Maui.
Anne Pecathy will be next.
Aloha, Shane. I wanted to ask you, what are some of the critical issues that affect Hana, specifically Hana area? I don't get out there much, but it's a heavenly place.
It's definitely been traffic on everybody's mind, because, as you know, the Hana Highway is our lifeline in and out of Hana, our rural area. And of course, emergency services. We get sometimes upwards of 600 cars and visitors. And so, we're trying to keep our visitors safe. Oftentimes, they're kind of all over the place and going onto areas that are not sanctioned, county or state parks with the necessary parking, bathroom, water, water access, all of those things, trash. And so, oftentimes, when these are visitors go off the beaten path, and especially when they get hurt, and, you know, worse even, you know, need to be rescued, our community really takes that to heart. And so, we've been, we've been working with that. We've been working with parking. Some of my budget priorities during this budget session for Hana has been more paving. Our roads are very dilapidated, and during the pandemic, a lot of these paving projects lapsed. And so, we did put in extra funding to see if we could go ahead and try and catch up with those areas where we see the roads are just not to code. Housing, of course, Anne, is another big issue for us. We have little inventory, and the majority of what inventory do we have is not just at a million, but two or three million. And so, we did use some of the Affordable Housing Funds to streamline Habitat for Humanity Project of 25 homes here in Hana. Hopefully, will go to local residents. During these past couple of years, we've seen all of the prices escalate, whether it be for electrical hookup, for drainage, for tie-ins into sewer or into the roads. All of these things have, has increased as far as construction costs. So we did increase some of our budgets for that. Of course, we did add, we always do, add more money for invasive species. I think they're always looking for more help when it comes to keeping our invasive species at bay. As you know, our property rates are one of our huge revenues, and we can just look at our neighbor island, the Big Island, where there see the koki frog infestation, the little red fire ant infestation. So all of these things has really decreased the quality of life for our residents. And so, hopefully, we're constantly looking at funding those efforts and funding the boots on the ground for protecting our environment.
As I recall, there was a problem, I mean, there was a big outcry from Hana residents about the tourists coming in, parking all over Hana Highway, and there was some problem with jurisdiction, because isn't the Hana Highway, is that state, federal, correct me?
Yes, Anne.
Problems overseeing that.
Yeah, for clarification, so if you're coming from Paia into Hana on the front side, that is under state jurisdiction. And then if you're going from Hana towards Kaupo and to Ulupalaku, that falls under county jurisdiction.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. What did happen, that we did see some improvement, was the state did put up some no parking signs where areas, particularly on the approaches of some of the bridges. And this is where we saw a lot of tour cars just parking alongside the approaches and blocking traffic, and in some instances, having like gridlock on the Hana Highway. So what was good about it was that they did put up signs. However, all of the violations go towards the state. However, but at the state level, they did change the law that Maui County will receive, I believe, half of those revenues from violations being paid to illegal parking. So that was, that was one of, an improvement over the last year.
Great. Very thorough answers.
Mark, we're going to have instead, Lucien has, before you leave, Lucien, you have one more question to ask? So we can have Lucien next, and then we'll have Mark.
That is, that is so kind. I was going to ask you about, you know, your committee has come up with so many innovative solutions, and you've really passed a lot of bills. I know that the whole council is working really hard on finding solutions to homelessness, but from a perspective, what do you think we can do to actually support people who, for a wide variety of reasons, end up without any shelter chronically?
A great question, Lucien. And I'm at home, but this is, this is my dad's home. Luckily, dad, you know, left me and my family a home, you know? And so, and just like here, we have three, four generations of families living in one home. So, and I'm not the authority on this, and I give credit to all the people who have been out there and working with our unsheltered and our homeless. As a past special needs teacher, we always advocated for children with disabilities. And so, while looking at all of the problems with our unsheltered and our homeless, I don't see that factor in dealing with our unsheltered, meaning that all you have is you have the unsheltered, and then you have the police, and then there's no in-between, right? So, I mean, I would love to see, and a lot of people out there, some of these people that have been helping with the homeless, they've been able to advocate for those unsheltered and for those homeless families. I think if we didn't have that in-between advocates to help our homeless people to traverse the system, then all you'll get is the police, you know, the criminal, the criminal aspect, if you only have the police dealing with the unsheltered. So I'm hoping that we can see more advocates. I would definitely help to fund advocates out there to help our homeless residents kind of traverse the county system, so that we can quickly put them into shelter and to more homes.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul, for giving me a question.
Mark Jordan, next.
Okay. Aloha, Shane, how are you?
Aloha, Mark, nice seeing you.
Good to see you. Just wanted to kind of piggyback on something that you were talking about earlier in terms of the recycling with relation to composting and the whole agricultural thing. To me, there's very little excuse for having such a small island or such small islands, really, you know, since there's four of them here, and not having curbside recycling. They've got it, they've got it in Oahu. Unfortunately, most people are not like us, and us, meaning my household, and willing to separate things out and then make a trip out to the recycling center, which is very convenient, there's no question about it. But even my friends in the Bay Area in California have kind of the three-can ability. And to me, you know, when we have such a small room on the island, you know, to not have something very much akin to that, I just don't understand. To me, there's no excuse. So I'd love to hear you address that.
Thank you, Mark, for that question. And yeah, other municipalities are way ahead from us. I too live for a stint in Portland, Oregon, and we had, you're right, we had to separate everything, paper, plastics, metals, all of those stuffs, and they kept it separate whenever they came and collected that. I think for me, my approach would be more towards the current system. I think the Department of Environmental Management and having EPNS, Environmental Protection and Sustainability, being under DEM. I think if we could have more separation of those, of that department, right? Currently, EPNS operates under the Department of Environment Management. And because, you're right, it is such a huge undertaking, especially with abandoned vehicles and those types of cars, so, abandoned vehicles and cars. So that would be one area where I would want to try and separate and work towards maybe making that, those changes, is maybe bifurcating the department, and then we can focus more on recycling. We can focus more on, and I'm hoping that maybe the Department of Agriculture, we can look at alternatives. Another problem, we've been trying to get a downdraft, a pilot project to try and divert trash out of the landfill, and maybe not incinerate, but at least try and look at pilot, and we've been working on that for years. And it just hasn't moved the sticks. I mean, we're trying to look at all those different, and how do we divert more trash out of the, out of our landfills? And so, downdraft gasification was one option, one pilot project that we're looking at. And we're still waiting for something like that to happen in Hana, because right now, Hana, I think it costs over $1,000 per ton to process our trash here in Hana. And it's not a lot of trash that we generate here, but the other landfills, particularly the central Maui landfill, definitely subsidizes the operations here in rural Hana.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting. I've found that as we've been doing these interviews, that the council representatives from the kind of more- council representatives from the kind of more remote rural places seem to be tackling some of the biggest issues. And that would include the agriculture, that would include the houseless, that would include the injection wells, I mean, et cetera, et cetera. And of course, you're well aware of this because you deal with it all the time. I have an interesting question for you. And that is, we're all working very hard to put together another council that is working for the people. Should that not occur this year? Do you feel that the remaining council members have a plan or might have a plan in place that might be able to overcome some of the issues that might address?
You know, and I have to go back to us first time running, and of course, running as a slate. I'm a small potatoes, a small campaign. A lot of people don't know me from, or never heard of me from rural Hana, East Maui. And so I think by, by running as as a slate with other candidates that had the same values, and that was willing to make the necessary changes, and of course, you know, support our individual community needs. I think that has been a success for me as an individual council member. I don't think if I I tried to run this on my own, and having to run all nine districts and three islands, trying to get my name out there would have been impossible. And so, you know, and because I have similar values and similar goals with other council members, we've been able to, you know, affect legislation at the council level. I think where other councils would not have been able to move anything through, let alone pass any legislation like we've seen in the past. So I appreciate my council members. We try to work with all the different districts, even though we represent the entire county. We're also very sympathetic to all the individual districts. As you well know, we go out and we visit with everybody, and so I think I've I don't take any credit for the successes that we've done as our committee. I think the successes have to be to other council members that have the same value system, and having those constituents that are willing to make change. Like you guys, come on and participate in our meetings, jump on from wherever you are, like in Bali, or, you know, and still participate in this, in this process. So I'm really appreciative of that, and I give credit to where credit is due.
Yeah, you've definitely got some dedicated folks here. I don't know whether you were, but Lucien was tuning in from Florida.
Oh, that's.
Thank you, Mark. I will ask the next question. And Shane, you mentioned affordable housing as being a core issue here right now in this election process. There are a lot of options on how we deal with that affordable housing, and one of them is working with it so that if the county does invest in supporting infrastructure or supporting the lowering of the actual cost of the housing, that that investment could then make it so that it becomes a community land trust, and it becomes affordable in perpetuity. What's your thought on having the county invest in housing and have that be so that it remains affordable in perpetuity?
Thank you, Paul, for that question. We've always supported either 30 years or to perpetuity, and to keeping those affordable homes, if you're gonna sell it, or if you can to sell it to another AMI at that rate, whether it be 80% AMI and below, or even 100% AMI and below. I think the problem that we've seen right in the past is that with a shorter, like a 10-year affordability timeline, we saw a lot of the homes that were used and built with affordable housing funds quickly turn over to market rates. And I believe that's how we've seen this this housing crisis kind of grow. To answer your question, with the current building costs, I don't know, and this was my question in Councilmember Johnson's Committee on Monday. I'm not sure if those developers right now with the increase of costs, shipping costs, are willing to develop right now. However, the other option, like you said, is to go with the nonprofits. Nonprofits would be able to take on some of these. If we invest, I believe we have 50-some million in the Affordable Housing Fund. And so if we can go ahead and use these funds to help those nonprofits and streamline their projects, then that way we can control the kind of a list that has a residential list, as, you know, as lawful as it can be. We can manage the affordability timeline to 30 years, or like you said, to perpetuity, and then just keep those affordable housing projects at those lower AMIs, 80, 100, or even lower, 60, 30% AMI.
One, just a further on question along that affordable housing issue. Gabe's committee came up with a study looking at the need for the county to develop infrastructure. And if we look at then the purchasing of land, having land and having the county develop infrastructure, especially if we're looking at the possibility of a new department dedicated to affordable housing, what are your thoughts of dealing with the infrastructure and the challenges we have right now of having non-fixed bids? Because from a lot of what I've seen is that when infrastructure starts happening, all of a sudden, there's another $5 million added or $3 million added, and yet it doesn't make it so that it's competitive either. So what's happening with infrastructure development, and also what can we do about it?
Right, great question. And frankly, you know, I need to look into it more too, Paul. We've already seen that if we don't, with the 7% inflation, rising costs, and we're trying, even though that we're receiving a lot of federal aid, and we have this extra revenues from real property taxes, it's not necessarily that we can complete these infrastructure projects. We're looking and we're seeing, you know, we're trying to get paving, and sometimes we just don't have the material to do all of the paving projects, you know. So, so looking at the materials and inventory, that's gonna be, even though we've got the funding available, I don't know if we have all those resources readily available. And I think prior to looking into those, we might have to go establish those resources first, before we start building, right? If we are going to be looking for more building materials, right? We may have to, you know, with plywood going upwards of $100 apiece, we might have to go beyond the state to try and secure lower costs, you know, whether it be on the West Coast, or or maybe even other countries, I don't know. Or we need to secure, as a county, we need to secure those areas where we do have quarry, quarry resources, so that we can somehow, you know, reduce the cost of building affordable homes. But I think everything is out there on the table, and I'm open to looking at how can we quickly build if we don't have enough resources. We've, the council has instituted a two-year moratorium on new accommodation, new accommodations and hotels, hopefully with, so that the industry, the building industry can focus more on infrastructure for, and housing, for affordable housing projects.
Thank you for that. Bruce Douglas next.
All right, Shane. So the real sign of a statesman is not just sitting back and passing bills and voting on things, but championing certain bills. And you've certainly done your share of championing some very good legislation. What would be your three favorite bills that you would champion during the upcoming term if you were re-elected?
Oh, great question. Let me, let me think. I mean, it's always been, you know, the need, what's the need? We've been working, my staff is constantly reminding me on this Water Authority and water issues that has, you know, we've just been working on it for the last year. But other agencies and other people, like Lucien, has been working on it for years. So I think continuing, continuing some of the work that we've done, building on the foundation that we've established. Housing is kind of in my, I come from a construction background in the Sanencie family. My uncles are builders, masons, and contractors. And so that is kind of where, you know, I like to see if I need to move to that one, I would love to do more housing projects and maybe expand. Councilmember Johnson has been doing some great work with the department and moving it forward. So it's not like I don't, I don't want to stop him from progressing. But I think you know, with the Water Authority, once we get, we're hoping that we can get enough votes to put it on the ballot, and then taken, taking it to the electorate. We're seeing that we know that Department of Water, the county Department of Water Supply, they're, they're just, they're a revolving fund. So they're just, just operating with the current system. They're not looking for additional sources of water, and particularly in climate, climate change, and looking to the future, when we might have more problems with securing water. So I think moving, working on that, working towards climate action and climate change, more resiliency, establishing, just kind of setting up the future, that we're just here in this time and space for a little bit. So whatever we can help to kind of establish those foundations for the next, the next generation coming in, I'm all for it. I'm all.
Okay, so we have a little freeze here with Shane, so we will just wait patiently. So those who are on Facebook Live, okay, we're back. Okay, Shane, continue. You were frozen for a little bit.
Oh, sorry about that. I was tucking up a storm, and yeah, I'm at home, so the connectivity here is kind of sketchy. But I did want to say that we do want to continue, I think it's, even though it's passing legislation, it's also creating, establishing foundations. And so whether it be water, whether it be housing, infrastructure, whether it be tourism management, whether it be cultural protections, I think the legislation is just enough to, to create funding and to move us forward. But I think we can go even, even further. And so I'm looking forward to creating more legislation that can, can take our work even, even further.
Great. Thank you. Next we'll have Anne. You're on mute, Anne. You have to unmute.
Okay, now can you hear me? Yeah, I wanted to address the plans to transition our community from being a tourist dependent to another form. And you've already have achieved this plan for a sustainable agriculture to support or promote and support farms to feed us. And so what other kind of industries have you thought of that could steer us away from being dependent on tourism?
Thank you, Anne, for that question. And you're right, so the Department of Agriculture. I think for me, the impetus of creating the, my personal goals about the Department of Agriculture was my Filipino grandpa, grandpa that came from the Philippines. And he was, you know, a very humble, small guy, but he was a resilient guy. And for us, he lived off the land, he, every, every part of the plant was utilized and not wasted. So I think having a department, we ate everything of the animal. We didn't throw everything away, we used it in some fashion. And so that, that history, that background really propelled me to keep all the, you know, not wasting and composting and recycling and reusing things. And so I think looking at the byproducts of agriculture, right? If we can do building materials with, with the byproducts of agriculture, compost, so that we can, you know, create our own soil, or even, you know, soil sequestration, putting back all that. And we definitely need to, to put more nitrous fix all of our soil again, because of the years of plantation and using pesticides, pesticides in the soil. Right. So I think it's, it's not just diversification economically, but it's also kind of, in some ways, healing and going back to a time where, you know, nature can, can, you know, I guess back to balance. Because in some ways, we've kind of, you know, tipped out of balance as far as our natural systems. And so I think, and if we can diversify economically while doing that, then the better, better for us for doing it too. But yeah, I'm always open to new ideas. I think I'll move in a direction where, one, people are supportive, where, two, we can benefit, and three, we can secure investments for our future.
Great, thanks. And to follow up on that, now some of the candidates and council members have mentioned the massive or major threat the Axis deer is upon farmers because they just consume everything, and then they cause runoff, and talked about creating an industry in, and sad to say, killing Axis deer and having these mobile slaughterhouses and processing and available for sale, having hunting, huntings going on. Because right now, it's not possible to buy that, at least easily on the market. Cause right now there, it's not possible to buy that, at least easily on the market. But do you consider the Axis deer to be a major threat? That, and, and industry could be made from that?
Yeah, well, currently without the US sanctioned slaughterhouses, we can't, right? Right? And, and, and currently whoever is you, using the Axis, Axis deer for, they're, they're shipping, they're shipping the carcasses up to the, to Seattle and to the North Coast, to the West Coast to be processed and then, and then returned back. Similar to cattle from the, the Big Island. So it's, it's too expensive to raise cattle, especially if you don't have grazing lands. So a lot of the, our cattle and the deer that is being harvested is being shipped for processing. I think hopefully with the Department of Agriculture, we can secure more processing plants. We've, there are five positions that will begin on July 1st in the, the new Department of Agriculture. We've added two more grant writers into the department so that we can try and go after some of these grants that are out there and so that we can, including infrastructure for agriculture. Hopefully we can get some large agriculture grants and we can quickly build the department with outside funding. And so that's the reason why we're, we put it, put in additional grant writers. So again, it's working with some of our state legislation. If we can secure areas in Maui County, maybe state lands that we can build more processing plants and to produce on the island.
I see. Great, thank you.
Our last question will come from Mark Joyner.
Yeah, aloha again, Shane. I, boy, I'll tell you, this has been such a thorough line of questioning and you've taken questions that were, were not intended on being part of a, a certain strain and, and move them elsewhere. So I've had just about all my questions answered. So I've, I've just kind of have a quickie for you. And that is, as, as you know, we've been dealing with the Keavakapu parking lot situation for, feels like forever. But it seems like we have a number of different areas throughout the county where the locals are complaining that they just don't have the access. You know, they wanna take their family to a certain beach or to a certain area on weekends and, and that's not possible. And I know the council's been doing quite a bit of thinking about this. And so I'm just wondering if you wouldn't mind addressing that just briefly.
Thank you, Mark, for that question. And, and I'm, I must say that I, I'm not as knowledgeable as, as some of the issues in the different districts. I know for Hana, on Monday, we, we did restrict parking, going to the Red Sand Beach because of just the, the overcrowding. However, we restrict in one area and then we see all the parking move to another area. And so it's at just capacity. We're, you know, we're having to, not play politics, but I say, hey, we, we gotta work with, with some of the, the landowners here. Hey, we, we can help you with, with no parking here, but can we use some of this property here for sanctioned parking? Where, where we can, you know, actually have visitors park. So parking is, you're right, an, an ongoing issue. I'm always open and coming up with creative ideas. Again, I'm always moved by, by calls from constituents that say, hey, you know, we have this issue here. And so we'll take that and run with it and then we'll, and then as a, as a council member, sometimes I can't act on it because, well, it's not under my purview or it's under the state purview. But we'll, but we'll, you know, we'll direct you to our state representative or to the State Department of Transportation. Okay, or we'll, we'll go and do the research for you. But other than that, I, as the council member, I will see what we can do within the county structure to go ahead and address those changes. And I think as a council member for three and a half years, we've been able to, to navigate the system, the current system that we're at and take some of our issues and then somehow move it along or make those changes where we can address it. And oftentimes it's, we come up on a dead end. Sometimes we, we solve the, the problem. But like I said, other times we'll solve it here and then it'll pop up here. So I get it, the Keavakapu, we did provide testimony. I thought it was, it was really important, Mark, that several council members provided testimony at the state in favor of keeping Keavakapu for, for our local residents.
And we really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Shane, again, as, as Mark mentioned, we covered an awful lot of ground in our questions. And I'm just wondering if there's anything that we have not covered that you'd like to address or if there's any concluding statements that you'd like to make?
Aloha, Paul, and thank you for having me. This is, this will be my third go around with answering questions from a community of organizations, associations like yourselves. And everyone is different, you know, it's still like, like the first time. But again, I appreciate all of your, I, I'm not the wherewithal or, or profess to be the authority on everything. But with help from all of you and, and my work as a council member and, and of course with our staff, we're able to address some of those concerns. You can, you can reach me at 264-8919. And my address in Hana is P.O. Box 343, Hana, Hawaii, 96713. However, I, we're working on getting up our campaign website up. But if you, if you're in Hana and you just ask for Shane, I'm sure everybody knows who I am and they'll definitely point you in the right direction.
Great. Thank you, Shane, so much. And for those of you who are listening in on Facebook Live, you can get all of the interviews at our Maui Poto Network website, also on Akaku, and also they are on our Facebook website also. So thank you for watching. Mahalo and be an informed voter. And remember one thing that's very important, that all of the citizens throughout the county are able to vote on all nine county council seats. Mahalo.